Good evening, everyone. I'd ask you to plead for my rights with the invitation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, I'm going to read the prayer of St. Francis. Heavenly Father, make us an instrument of your peace. Where there's hatred, let us sow love. Where there's injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. And where there is sadness, joy. Divine Master, grant that we may not seek so much to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. We have no name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. It is 5:30 June 15, 2020, and I will call to the meeting of the Ferguson Falls City Council. Order. Roll call, please.
AM.
Here.
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 We have a floor. First item on the agenda this evening is a total of the agenda, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Brenstef. Good evening, Andrew.
All right. Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. It's really nice to see all of you in person. First time in a long time, and glad to have everybody back in the room this evening. On the agendas before you, there are a couple of additions. First of all, under on the consent agenda, item number nine will be PI 5335, which is the North Concord Street Improvement Project. And then, under Board Committee and Department Reports, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee is making a request to conduct a demonstration project on Union Avenue. So that's item number five under Section J.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion approving the amended agenda.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor of that motion, signify. I'm sorry, we're gonna have to do roll call since Anthony's on Zoom, so. Roll call, please.
One finger for yes, two for no.
Yes.
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 That motion is approved. There was a time delay in Casey's words. Under public hearings, we have multiple public hearings this evening. First one is a public hearing for housing tax rebate for 604 Ann Street. And we would need a resolution approving housing tax abatement after that public hearing. The first thing we will do is we will open up the public hearing for the housing tax rebate for 604 Ann Street. Anyone wishing to speak to this, please step to the lectern and state your name. Hearing is open. Seeing no one, hearing is closed, and it's back to the council. I would entertain a resolution approving that housing tax rebate.
I'll offer that resolution.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Any further discussion?
Your Honor, I got one question, just out of curiosity. Do these houses have to be built within this calendar year?
Clara, would you like to answer that question?
Hi, Anthony. Thank you for the question. No, they technically do not need to be built this year as long as they fall within the timeline of the rebate program itself, which runs for three years. However, if the work done doesn't match with what is written up in the agreement between the city and the homeowner or home builder, whichever it may be, in whichever case, then there may be reason for recourse, but there's generally a dialogue that takes place between city staff and whoever is building the house to say, what does your timeline look like? Let's make sure that our dates match up so that we're not, you know, way off in assuming that something's gonna be built in 2020 when really, it's not gonna be finished till 2021. So the dates are generally set in the agreement that's signed between the city and the homeowner, if that makes sense.
May... Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Anthony. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
No.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item two is a public hearing for housing tax rebate at 2022 Connell Drive. Again, we will open the hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this property at 2022 Connell Drive and the housing tax rebate for the council, please step to the lectern. Seeing no one, close the hearing, and it's back to the council. We would look for a resolution approving that tax rebate.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin.
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
No.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number three is a public hearing for housing tax rebate at 3827 Eagle Ridge Road. And once again, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to the housing tax rebate for the property located at 3827 Eagle Ridge Road, please step to the lectern. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. It's back to the council. Would someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Caroline.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brent. Seeing no discussion, roll call, please.
No.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number four is a public hearing for housing tax rebate for Section 10 Township 132, Range 43, including several lots and blocks of that flat and A through M of those properties. Anyone wants me to read those off individually? I certainly will. If not, I will open the public hearing for those properties located in Section 10 Township 132, Range 43. Anyone wishing to speak? Lectern, seeing no one, close that hearing, and it's back to the council.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. Roll call, please.
No.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under awarding of bids, say, we have one bid to be awarded, and that is, I would be done with the resolution. Awarding the bid for public improvement 5330. I'll call on our public engineer, city engineer Brian Euberg. Good evening, Brian.
Thank you. Good evening, Your Honor, and members of this council. Before you, on as regards to the College Way Street Improvement Project, this is a resurfacing project with some enhancements, such as turn lane striping and bike lanes on College Way from Tower Road to Lincoln Avenue. On June 4th, electronic bids were opened and read aloud. A total of four bids received at the time of this opening. Ferguson Asphalt Painting Incorporated out of Alexandria, Minnesota, submitted the lowest bid in an amount of $196,986.46. The engineer's estimate cost was $275,000. Therefore, Interstate Engineering and myself reviewed the bidding documents, conducted a post-bid interview, and prepared the attached bid abstract for reference, if you prefer. If awarded, we arrange a pre-construction meeting. We anticipate this project could be completed substantially by December 2020. The funding source from this project is supposed to be the city's municipal stadium's reconstruction account. Sufficient funds are available to proceed with this project. So at this time, I'm requesting the board of construction services contract to Ferguson Asphalt and Pavings Incorporated in the amount of $196,986.46.
Thank you, Brian. And I would entertain a resolution before we have discussion on that.
I'll make that.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. Questions for Brian? Yes, Scott.
You mentioned that there was striping for biking. I didn't quite catch all what you said right there. Apparently, it's not just gonna be what it was before. It's got some additional striping from what it was before?
Yes, that's correct. I think we leave back in the advertisement. We went through it a little bit more in detail, but I can however, go into more detail, if you may. But yes, it's pretty much consistent with what you see there as of right now. We do have an enhanced turn lane and the addition of bike lanes begging on the shoulders, similar to what we did on College Way from West to Tower Road.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian. Any other questions? Call for the... Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. There are no petitions or communications this evening. Under item G, the consent agenda, there are nine items on the consent agenda. They're a copy in your packet. Anyone would like to discuss any of those items individually? We will pull them from the consent agenda. Before I would entertain a resolution approving the consent agenda as presented.
I'll offer that.
Second, Your Honor. Thank you, Tom. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight, we have a first reading of ordinance 4, 8th series, rezoning the GNX Holdings LLC Bond Properties from B2 to I2. And someone like to introduce that? Ralph, do you have any comments before it's introduced?
No, I have no comments. It's just at the request of the property owner for the rezoning request of going from a business district to an industrial district. So if this is something you would like to do, we just need a first reading.
First read. Someone like to introduce that this evening?
I'll introduce that.
Thank you, Krista. Second item, we will entertain a resolution authorizing a letter of support for DW Jones Incorporated to Minnesota Housing for their 2021 housing tax credit program to rehab Cascade Apartments. And I would call on community development manager Clara back.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. We... The city was approached by a member of the DW Jones Management Company. They are sending an application for housing tax credits to rehab Cascade Street Apartments. If you will recall, we are also working with the HRA on their own application to a slightly different tax... Housing Tax Credit Program through Minnesota Housing. So these two programs are not in competition with each other.
Update on the 19 in Alberta with Assistant Minister of Health. Father Shandrew, as well as Dr. Dina Hinshaw, Chief Medical Officer of Health for Alberta. Minister Shandrew will provide a brief update, followed by Dr. Hinshaw.
Thank you, Tom. Hey, good afternoon. Today is an important day for our province. Today, I'm pleased to announce that the state of public health emergency will lapse in Alberta. We've come a long way since these...
Just a reminder, Your Honor. Folks on the Zoom meeting, please keep your microphones muted. Mr. Doring, I believe that was your microphone that became unmuted. So just be cognizant of that, as we can all hear what you're doing if they're unmuted.
So as I was saying, DW Jones Management Company is hoping to get a letter of support from the city in order to be able to make their application to Minnesota Housing for their tax credits in order to make some of the changes to the Cascade Street Apartments that they're hoping for. It is all laid out for you in the memo. There is no monetary investment on behalf of the city. It's just a letter of support saying, yes, we are okay with the fact that you want to upgrade your housing.
Thank you, Clara. And with that, would someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll offer that.
Thanks, Brent. Scott, is that a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Scott. Any further discussion? Any questions for Clara? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number three is a resolution approving and consenting to the issuance of $450,000 in general obligation taxable bond, Series 2020B of Ferguson Falls. Port Authority of Commerce, Finance Director Bill Sommer. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening. Thank you, Your Honor and council. Yes, good to have you back in the room, that's for sure. We had a Port Authority meeting earlier this evening at 4:15, and the Port Authority approved issuing bonds in the amount of $450,000. And this is part of a demolition loan that... Cleanup revolving loan that we are getting for the dairy site. The total amount awarded was $1,230,000, of which $780,000 is forgivable as a grant, leaving the remaining $450,000 as a 15-year term bond. There is 0% interest on that bond. That will be... There's no payments for the first two years, so therefore, it's payable over the last 13 years of that. So like I said, the Port Authority did approve that. And then, we're here before the city council to have you pass a resolution approving and consenting to that issuance. And that's what's in your packet tonight. And that... And we have the city council do that because the city of Ferguson Falls is putting our full faith and credit behind the payment of that bond. Of course, the intent is to pay these bonds back with sale of property for development down on that dairy site once that's cleaned up. But if that doesn't happen soon enough, we would have a tax levy in an amount of about $36,000 on this per year. Again, we look to sell that property, but we do have to put our full faith and credit behind that. So that's why we're before you tonight.
Thank you, Bill. Someone like to offer that resolution?
Offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Caroline. Any questions for Bill before we call for the vote? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number four is a resolution extending the business loan deferrals and removing any approved interest payments. Andrew, would you like to...
I think Clara's gonna kick us off.
Clara, okay. Thank you, Clara. I'd like to address that.
Yes. It has... Back in, I believe it was early March, the council passed a resolution allowing the deferral of city loan payments to be made to businesses that were affected by COVID-19 closures. Since not every business is back open and operating at 100%, I should clarify, at that point, it was... The abatements were allowed to happen for the next three months. We are nearing the end of that time period, but not every business is able to be open and operating at 100%. So we are requesting that... Staff is requesting that that ability for businesses to defer their payments be extended for another month, and that we also not accrue interest, both during the three-month period before this and moving forward.
Thank you, Clara. Someone like to offer that before we have discussion?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Jim. Brent, thank you, second. Questions, comments, discussion?
I've got some comments or questions. I think before we extend additional credit, we should be asking the borrower, you know, what they've done thus far to, you know, mitigate the COVID-19 issues that they faced. You know, obviously, why they are looking for it. What is their plan to catch up? Ultimately, you know, it affects our cash flow as much as obviously affects theirs. And I would like to see, you know, what... Some of their financials, like their last year's tax filing, and how much cash they have on hand. You know, and if there aren't guarantees, personal guarantees in place, then I would like to see some personal guarantees put in place. Obviously, you know, we are only custodians of this money for the people of Ferguson Falls. And obviously, as much as it's, you know, a major financial impact, what has happened to all businesses and all... A lot of households as well. And we still have a fiduciary duty to look after, you know, the money that belongs to the citizens of Ferguson. And I wouldn't... I wouldn't say I wouldn't grant an extension to somebody if there was a solid plan in place. But I think to carte blanche, allow people an additional month on top of the three months, you know, there's a deferred interest. I think, you know, that's not fair on the rest of the citizens of Ferguson. So I think we need to have some caveats as to why we would be, you know, willing to extend the deferment of the loan.
Thanks, Anthony. Any other... Scott?
The question I have has to do with the statement that says we would reverse the decision to allow interest to accrue. I need to understand that better. When we made this decision in the first place, it was basically to let them wait and then pay later, and there would be no interest. So if we were to accept this now, does the interest go back to day one or just from this additional month?
I think actually, it's the opposite. I think when we approved in April, we said that we would forgive... Allow three-month grace period of no payments, but there would... We would... Interest would accrue. What this is saying is that we're extending that to a fourth month, and interest is not accrued from starting April 1st. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, Your Honor. And Congressman Kwame, essentially, what we would be doing now is just extending the life of the loan. The payments would stay the same because that interest would not have accrued over that three-month period. But the mayor's exactly right. The way we have it today, interest has been accruing during the last three months.
So just to be clear too, for everyone, these people, they're paying the exact same amount that they originally signed. They're just doing it over four months longer than the original note that they signed.
Yeah, so essentially, the amortization schedule's just extended four months. It would be paid off four months later than it otherwise would have, if this was to be approved this evening.
Any other?
I just have a comment, I guess, or maybe a question and a comment, is I think... I think the intention of this is a good thing, and I think it's putting our best foot forward to help our local businesses. With that being said, how many businesses do we have participating in the deferment? Do we know... Are all of them participating in it, or is there a percentage that is?
I know they're not all, but Clara, do you know the...
It's a list of... Bill's got the list sitting in front of him. It's a list of seven businesses.
Yep, so seven businesses. So there are quite a number of businesses that have continued to pay and keep up with their loans. I'll make one side comment. A reason why we are, you know, bringing before you the possibility of kind of erasing that interest accrual... I put out a listserv out to fellow finance directors around the state, and we... From the responses I got, probably more of them were not accruing any interest during this deferral period. Certainly, some others were. But more of them than not, I guess, were... Were not accruing interest in that time. So that's why we bring that before you for your consideration tonight.
Thanks for that clarification. And I think, in light of what Mr. Hicks said, I think we're gonna be made whole, and I'm not disagreeing with him, but I think we have a small impact to our local businesses. It's a small percentage that are participating in the program. I think if we can extend it one more month, I would be in favor of that. So I'll be voting yes.
Thank you. Any other comment? We do have a resolution, a second on the floor, so... Roll call, please.
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
That resolution is approved. Under presentation of claims, tonight, we have claims in the amount of $1,519,689.82. And if there's any questions, we would refer them to our finance director.
Resolution to pay the bills.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Any questions for Bill? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under Board Committee and Department Reports, item number one is an update on the RTC master plan, and I will call on Ryan Miller to walk us through this update. Good evening, Ryan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, members of the council. I wanted to just take a few moments to provide an update on the work that's being done for the RTC master plan that kicked off earlier this year. I'll go through a few slides that will mostly cover kind of the community outreach and input that we've gotten so far for this process. And Bill Hickey from Collaborative Design Group, the project manager for the master plan, is joining us via Zoom as well. If there's any questions, I'm at the end of this quick update. Okay, sorry about that. So like I mentioned, this will mostly cover our community outreach and input methods to this point. So we've done a few different... Few different methods of community engagement and outreach. We do have a project advisory committee that was established for this project to guide the development of our community outreach and engagement efforts. They had a kickoff meeting on January 22nd. It included a site visit of the RTC. And we also then had a sit-down meeting then to discuss the community engagement methods. The first of those methods was a community survey, which was available online and hard copies. It was available for 29 days from February 7th to March 6th. And I have some more details on the results of that survey on the following pages. We held stakeholder interviews, which were a series of seven small group interviews on February 24th and 25th. And then, we also did host a virtual community meeting, which was held. We had an online link for a webinar format, and it was also displayed on Peg Access TV between April 9th and May 1st. So that was a 23-day virtual community meeting. We intended to have that in person at the N State Community College campus, but it was shut down for COVID-19 reasons. We had to switch to a virtual event. I'm just gonna have to ask you to switch it. I don't think it's working. So the community survey, like I mentioned, was open for 29 days, available online and in hard copy format. We had 1,403 submissions to our survey. Of those, 1,386 were online, and we had 17 hard copies filled out and returned to City Hall. Of the online submissions, we did have it broken down between local responses and non-local responses. So of the online responses, 986 were local, and all of the 17 hard copies were also local responses. And local being residents of Attletow County that responded to our survey. We also did have 417 non-local responses to that online survey. And the survey really focused on three categories of data collection. One, community perspectives on the feasibility of reuse. Two, community identified concerns to guide redevelopment and analysis of reuse. And three, specific reuse ideas. So the first was community perspectives on the feasibility of reuse. This covered three questions. The first question was, do you think reuse is feasible? And of the 1,403 responses, 74% determined that it is feasible for reuse. Now, of the 986 local responses, 72% indicated that reuse is feasible. Question two, for those that thought reuse was feasible, ask for an explanation of why you feel reuse is feasible. why you feel reuse is feasible, and the three top scoring or three top answers for why they thought reuse was feasible. One, the buildings are historic. Two, reusing the RTC could present benefits to the city. Three, retrofitting the building is within the realm of possibility. And then there were some other responses as well, such as the economic potential, the history, a social need, and a sunk cost, or basically the cost that's already been put into that building and its infrastructure is, would likely not be possible today. The cost is much larger today to build a building of that significance. The third question was for the opposite, those that did not believe reuse was feasible, and for this, 16% of the total responses thought reuse was not feasible, and 18% of the local responses indicated that reuse was not feasible. And for those responses, the main reasons were, one, the costs, retrofit buildings would be too high. Two, buildings are obsolete and cannot be retrofitted to accommodate today's needs. Three, buildings are too old. Four, too much time and money would be required to find a market-worthy reuse. There were some other responses as well, such as lost time and money since the former use ended, limited resources, resources in the economy, building condition, and location So the next part of the survey focused on community identified concerns to guide the development and reuse, analysis of reuse options. And the responses gathered from the survey in order of most mentioned were the following: new economic activity is brought to Fergus Falls, a positive image is created for Fergus Falls, customers are brought to Fergus Falls, the RTC's buildings and historic campus are restored and rehabilitated, the RTC's history is built upon, the historical and cultural traditions of Fergus Falls are built upon, and the RTC is financially sustainable. So these are some of the big concerns to look into when looking at reuse according to the survey responses. And the last item of data collected was some specific reuse ideas collected through the survey, and these are listed in order of the top scoring reuse options, those being real estate and rental leasing, arts, entertainment and recreation, retail trade, educational services, accommodation and food services, professional scientific and technical services, information, healthcare and social assistance. A couple other answers included no reuse and government services, both were quite low. The rest of these had 24% or more of response, survey responses, the rest were below. All right, so for a summary of this community survey, a majority of survey respondents support the reuse of the Regional Treatment Center. Views in opposition focused on economic health of the community and the need to balance the costs of preservation and the costs of addressing local needs. Economic vitality was seen as important on both sides, those for and opposed to reuse Of the reuse options that might gain support according to the data collected, reuse options should be economically sustainable, they should increase Fergus Falls' regional draw, they should not create an reasonably high tax burden, they should result in a positive economic impact, where there are benefits that can be realized, and a balance of costs and benefits over the long term should be included in reuse options. And the last item on the, on the community survey was clear that respondents recognized that the RTC is a unique asset, but also understand that this is complex, so reuse is, any reuse is really complex. And that's it for the community survey. Can you pause here if there's any questions on that? Okay, so after the community survey was closed, and our consultants collected all that data, they put into a summary, which we just went through, and they used that as one of the items in the virtual community meeting. So like I mentioned, virtual community meeting was held for 23 days, available on Peg Access. It did run a total of 36 times on Peg Access. It played every, played six times every Wednesday and Saturday for three weeks. The virtual community meeting discussed the survey results. They did an analysis of the building condition, as noted in that site tour, and it went through demographic and market considerations. An additional survey was available for feedback to the virtual community meeting. We had 31 responses to that survey. And then our project advisory committee met on May 14th to review the virtual community meeting results and to begin drafting our guiding principles and approaches to reuse analysis, which is the final, final slides here I have in this update. So with all of that community outreach and input, and the project advisory committee's review of them, the consultants have put together draft guiding principles. They're still in a draft, a draft form. I won't go through them word for word here, but they, the draft guiding principles focus on historic preservation, being an economic catalyst, being financially sustainable, creating an attractive and accessible reuse that's available to the community and visitors, and a focus on transparency through the planning and redevelopment process. Also, with the guiding principles alongside that is a draft approach to reuse analysis, and this is what consultants would use to, in addition to those guiding principles, look at potential reuses and going into a deeper dive on financial feasibility reuse, reuse options. So the draft approach, the draft approach, it, you know, describes the RTC, the physical description, and it mentions that, you know, this, this will require a mixed-use phased approach to redevelopment. And then it goes into more detail about some potential reuse options. So the advisory committee identified two compatible anchor tenants that could provide reliable cash flow and create a foundation to attract complementary uses in the mixed-use approach to redevelopment. The first is residential uses, including a mix of incomes and specialized housing, service, services for veterans and seniors. And two, residential healing, which would include facilities to provide treatment for, treatment and healing for people with PTSD, brain trauma, or addiction. And then in addition to those two anchor tenants, the advisory community, the advisory committee identified a number of possible complementary uses that would go in, in with those anchor tenants, such as small-scale retail that supports the anchor tenants, food and lodging for families of treatment participants, arts, and offices for small businesses, government or nonprofit organizations. Like I mentioned, the draft guiding principles and reuse methods are still in a draft phase. We're still working out some wording of those, those guiding principles. Items still being discussed include the use of historic preservation and guiding principles, specifically defining what that is, using the National Register and Secretary of the Interior Standards definitions of preservation. Looking more at the accessibility of future interior spaces for the public, looking at, you know, the potential arts that could be integrated into the reused options, discussing or distinguishing, I guess, the differences in the healing options, the PTSD versus addiction type of uses. While continuing to look at the market to be used for redevelopment options. And finally, the advisory committee has recommended or requested, I guess, a meeting to go over these, this language with the SHPO office here in Minnesota. So lastly, next steps and timeline for we're going forward, we'll finalize those guiding principles and approach to reuse options. Once those are finalized, there will be a deep dive analysis of the preferred reuse alternatives. We'll have some additional community engagement, followed by finalizing the finance and implementation strategy. A final report will be presented, hopefully, we're thinking probably fall at this point. And so my last item here is coordinating with SHPO on our timeline. So we were supposed to have this done by the end of July of this year. I've been in communication with SHPO about likely needing an extension, since we had to basically replan our entire community meeting, and they're, they're understanding that with COVID, an extension beyond July 31st would be likely. So a final report would be probably after that. So that's all that I had. It's a lot, I know. So any questions? Like I said, Bill Hickey is also here with us. If you have questions for the team from Collaborative Design Group.
Just reiterate just that last little bit about the timeline, the final, final report, the final, with the refined uses would be when? Fall?
Well, so we, we have a grant requirement, a grant from the state that funded a portion of this project, and that grant required that we have it done by July 31st of this year. However, we'll be likely asking for an extension. It's grant-related, getting a final report together and reviewed by the council as well as SHPO. We had, had to have that done by July 31st, but probably not.
Just with the light of the situation, it's understandable. Other questions? Comments for Ryan?
Your Honor, I got a couple of comments or questions.
Go ahead.
I'm kind of curious that obviously there was emphasis put on the people outside of Fergus. I mean, there was only 986 participants from Fergus, Otter Tail County, and then there was obviously, you know, 417 from people outside of the Fergus Falls, Otter Tail County. You know, and I think, you know, we forget that they are not the ones that pay, you know, the taxes in, in the community. And when you think that there's 59, almost 60,000 people in Otter Tail County, it's not a very big percentage that actually completed the survey. I kind of think that, you know, a lot of this is basically just a rehash of kind of things that we've touched and talked about for, for a long time. There's no new ideas about anything, you know, from, I mean, we've talked about, obviously, restaurants, we've talked about housing, we've talked about healthcare, you know, both holistic as well as traditional. We've talked about vets' homes, we've talked about PSD clinics. This report, you know, as pretty as it is, you know, it compares us to Michigan and Traverse and even Wilma, which are totally different sites than, than Fergus Falls. It doesn't really take into account that Fergus Falls, Otter Tail County is only 60,000 people. So I, I think, you know, we're putting a lot of emphasis on this report, and in one of the conclusions, you know, they do state that, you know, the consultant team understands that preserving the entire facility is not a foregone conclusion. And I think we have to be realistic about the expectations of what we can accomplish. And I don't think we can accomplish preserving it all. And so I think, you know, it would be nice to see the committee focus on something that's achievable. And saving the entire horseshoe or redeveloping the entire horseshoe is probably unrealistic. And when you consider that maintaining the Kirk pride as it is now costs about $100,000 a year, that's a significant burden to the taxpayer of Fergus Falls. So I, and I think as well, it would be nice to reiterate who are the committee members on this, and I would like to see that kind of put out there so people can see who the committee members are, so they can reach out to them before they go and sit with SHPO and agree a whole bunch of things that are unrealistic that we cannot accomplish as a community. Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony. Brett?
Now, I'm just curious if it's the same thing, just like this study they were doing with what we could do with the, you know, the land with the water treatment plant, no, excuse me, not, the Otter Tail coal burning plant, the Hoot Lake. And it's like, we can come up with a million ideas on what we're going to do with it, but we don't own the land, so we don't make the decision. So I'm assuming we can come up with all these ideas on what we can do with the RTC, but if we turn around and say it's going to be retail or it's going to be manufacturing, we get somebody who comes in and says, hey, we want to turn this into senior housing, I don't think we're going to turn around and tell them no. I mean, he comes up with the figures of $100,000, and I talked to Bill once about this before, and I think the minimum maintenance on it was, what, $20,000 a year to maintain it? And we have roughly enough for two to two and a half years. I mean, with these ideas they come up with, if somebody comes forward, hopefully it brings in a, somebody with some ideas if something wants to do with it. But I think if it doesn't, when it gets down to the end of it, we're right back where we started from, and we're going to have to look at what more needs to come down. But, I mean, this was a means to an end in order to get a, SHPO to agree, so we could take down the center of the horseshoe and save, still save the tax credits, which is hopefully what we can still use it for if a developer does come forward. But I don't think this survey is binding us to saying it's going to be this, or it's going to be this, or it's going to be this. It's just putting it out there. I mean, feel like Greater Fergus Falls can, you know, you know, go out on a thing and, you know, try to sell this place, and these are the ideas they're trying to do. I don't think we're going to be bound to anything by this survey.
Yeah, thank you, Brett, for that. And just, I think, to clarify, you're right, this is not a binding document.
Yeah.
It's a guiding document. Any other, so thank you, Brett. Any other questions, comments?
We do have, Bill Hickey on the line is willing to make a few comments.
Sure. Go ahead, Bill. Good evening.
Good, good evening, everyone. As Ryan mentioned, this is Bill Hickey from Collaborative Design Group. Just to touch on a couple things, we did distinguish the Otter Tail County respondents from those beyond the county for a couple of reasons. One, to make sure that you understood what the local sentiments were, but also in recognition that at least some of those, let's call them external respondents, were from Cass County for North Dakota, for instance, or part of the market area that, that we need to be keeping an eye on as we look at, at possibilities for the, for the complex. The sense of needing something to be financially feasible is very much foreground in all our discussions. And we are, in some respects, I understand covering ground that you have already addressed, but it's in a manner of making sure our due diligence is done, that we've addressed community concerns, and that now we'll start to move that forward. And from this process will come an assessment of what is feasible now, what is feasible in the future. You are correct that many of the precedents we look at are not exactly like this, but there's, there's nothing exactly like this. The RTC is a unique facility, so it is worth some, worth some thought, and, and we're working through that process now.
Thank you, Bill. Jim?
We're right back where we've been for the last 12, 15 years. It's, we got all kinds of ideas on what this can be used for, but nobody's come up with the money to do it. And we're right back where we were. The city is not going to put that kind of money into this to have somebody move into it, not unless we have some guarantees. And if, like I say, we're right back where we were, and show me the money, we can do something with it.
Thank you, Jim. Any other, there's no action to be taken on this night?
Just an update.
Just an update, this information. Anyone, any last comments before we move on? Thank you, Brett. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Item number two is a Human Rights Commission 2020 work plan presentation. I will call Abby from the Human Rights Commission. Good evening, Abby. Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you. I was supposed to be here before COVID, so I'm happy to be here today with all of you and present both our plan and just a couple updates of what we've done so far for 2020. So the mission statement of the Human Rights Commission is, the Human Rights Commission of the City of Fergus Falls works for the protection of human rights for all people and helps empower people to realize their rights through education, advocacy, and community engagement. The FFHRC is committed to creating an inclusive community that values diversity and protects human rights for everyone. We do this by conducting educational programming and distributing information in order to help people understand human rights and eliminate discriminatory practices, advising government, businesses, and private individuals on human rights issues, concerns, and complaints from the community, informing and advising the Fergus Falls City Council on human rights concerns and complaints, and assuming the responsibility to pass on human rights concerns to the Minnesota Department of Human Rights. So our 2020 plan is, was to continue to meet here in city council chambers the second Tuesday of each month from 12:30 PM to 1:30 PM to increase the visibility of the commission. the visibility of the commission by posting regularly about upcoming meetings, increase the accessibility of the commission by creating a form to allow Fergus Falls citizens to access the commission better, to continue to promote Indigenous Peoples' Day in Fergus Falls, and to promote Human Rights Day in Fergus Falls. And so far on those goals, we have worked to increase our visibility. Previously, our meetings were posted on the city website and just here in city hall, which is not all that visible. So we've been posting on Facebook reminders of our monthly meetings, and people have responded to that. And then as far as accessibility, formerly you had to write to the city or physically appear at one of our meetings, which is obviously daunting and not always even a functional possibility for people to show up in person. So we did create a form on the city website where folks who are interested in reaching out to the Human Rights Commission can write to us anonymously or openly about any concerns they may have. So those are a couple of things we've accomplished thus far in 2020.
Thank you. Abby, any questions on the 2020 work plan? All right. Thank you, Abby. Item number three is Human Rights Commission and Police Department recommendations supporting human rights. And again, I'll ask Abby to start that conversation first.
Yeah. So in light of the death of George Floyd here in Minnesota and requesting inquiry that we were receiving from community members looking for a response to the situation, the Human Rights Commission and law enforcement decided to make a joint stance on the importance of human rights, the intention for every individual in Fergus Falls to be treated equally and fairly. So that's what we've got for you here today. It reads, "In light of recent events across our country, and more specifically the death of George Floyd at the hands of a Minneapolis police officer, the city's Human Rights Commission and the Fergus Falls Police Department bring forth the proclamation of support of the basic principles of humanity outlined in the United Nations Universal Declaration of Human Rights. Both entities wish to reaffirm the fundamental freedoms of all people who are due equal rights and dignity under the protection of the United States Constitution and community values. This proclamation of support will help guide, educate, and empower all people to live a free life regardless of distinctions. It shall be the foundation of building a community filled with hope, love, trust, and equality." And that is respectfully submitted by Kyle Bergeron, Chief of Public Safety, as well as the Human Rights Commission membership, which includes myself, Becky Schwartzoff, Dorcina Kleiken, and Victoria McWayne Creek.
Thank you, Abby. I appreciate the work on this issue. I would just like to say that, as Abby mentioned at the last regular meeting of the Human Rights Commission, the Police Department and the Human Rights Commission agreed to put forth this joint recommendation to the city council to proclaim the support for the basic principles of humanity as outlined in the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. Before, the Police Department and Human Rights Commission had a chance to submit their request to the council for consideration, public narrative surrounding the wording of this recommendation, the origination of the words took over and overshadowed what is most important to me as the mayor, and that is the partnership that you created with the Police Department and the Human Rights Commission, and the important work as a community we do surrounding human rights. At this point, I believe that this proclamation has the potential to further divide this community around an issue that should bring us together. And I would suggest that the council ask the Human Rights Commission and the Police Department to continue this important dialogue and come forward with clear action to the council that affirms the city's commitment to human rights, but at the same time affirms our oath and our commitment to the Constitution of the United States as well. I don't think those are mutually exclusive. I think we can do that. I don't want to get the origins of these words in the way of the good work that we're trying to do together and the partnerships that have been developed between the Police Department and the Human Rights Commission and the city and residents of this community. That's my thoughts on the issues. Out of respect to the process and out of respect to the Human Rights Commission, out of respect to the Police Department, we have a memo in front of us that is submitted to the council for consideration by the Human Rights Commission, Police Department. And it's up to the council what they'd like to do. They would like to recognize this memo. So with that, I'm going to leave it to the council. Brett?
Yeah, I mean, anything that draws in the United Nations, we're talking about everything around the country. And I'm not willing to, the way that our country is run versus the way the remainder of the world is run may not always be the same. And the Constitution may not cover it. I mean, our Constitution covers arson. So anything that draws in the United Nations and what they believe, I won't be behind. If we draw up something here in town that works, you know, for us here, and, I mean, I think Fergus Falls does pretty well as it is. I don't want to hopefully be drugged down just because of some of the stuff that's going around the rest of the country. But the point is, is anything that draws in on the United Nations, I don't want any of their stuff that they've drawn up being forced on us here. I mean, I think the way the United States runs and the way the rest of the world runs is totally different, and I'm not, not going to stand behind anything that really draws in the United Nations.
Thank you, Brett. There was a proclamation that...
They're on the Zoom too. Oh, sorry.
Thank you for that, Brett. So I guess, any other comments from the council? Scott?
I'm going to side with Brett on this one. Earlier today, when we got this proclamation given to us, I noticed the same concerns as far as the potential conflicts with dealing with the United Nations and what the United Nations might have to, what they might like to see. And then I wrote a short email back to Ben describing how I was going to respond to this tonight, assuming that this would be presented like so many other proclamations and then just loaded on. If we don't present it for a vote, that's fine with me tonight. If it gets essentially tabled and sent back for review or rewording, that's fine with me. But this is how I responded this morning. I said to Ben, "I appreciate your desire to publicly express concern in an official way in response to the death of George Floyd and the subsequent protests. This proclamation, this document, is well-written, very carefully-written to try to soften the connection to the United Nations and to state that this is not domestic law. However, I will not support this proclamation. I'm happy to support the United States Constitution as the law of the land, which is sufficient in its description of our rights. I'm also happy to support our Declaration of Independence, which clearly states that our rights are given to us by our Creator and cannot be taken from us. The UN's Universal Declaration of Human Rights has no such reference to God and puts the United Nations in the possession of being the rights giver. And I'm not comfortable allowing the perception that the UN has the authority to grant or deny rights to anyone. And I do not feel it is necessary to make a proclamation based on any guidance or direction from the UN. If you'd like to present a proclamation stating an opinion of the council regarding the specifics of the George Floyd case with references to our Constitution, our Bill of Rights, our Declaration of Independence, I will consider adding my support. But I will not support this proclamation as it's written."
Thanks, Scott. Just to, yeah, just to make me clarify one more, so everyone's on the same page. That proclamation is different than the memo that Abby read. There was a little confusion about what went out in the package. So just to clarify, the memo that Abby read is different than the proclamation, but they're based off of the same, same side. Yes, Jim?
I would also not support anything that's got UN in it.
Sure. And I think, yeah, thank you, Jim. I think that, and that is where my statement comes from. I recognize I've talked to a lot of people in this community. There are a lot of good people who support human rights in this community. We have a problem with the UN language in this document, and I respect that very much so. And I think that, I'm afraid that language gets in the way of the good work that we're doing with the Police Department. I also recognize there are people that want to make sure that those, that level of human rights is recognized. I believe, as Brett made mention, I believe we as a community can come up with a document that supports our beliefs around human rights in this community. I'm incredibly happy to see the chief of police working with the Human Rights Commission to come up with this document. I think it's, quite frankly, maybe it's a little bit premature and hasn't had some of the conversations around the community that is needed. I think the intent is there, and I do not want this to be, and again, I don't want this issue to divide us around what should be a unifying, you know, an issue that brings us together. And so if someone would like to make a motion asking the Human Rights Commission to continue working and see if they can come up with a document, if you guys don't want to act on that, it's up to the council.
I'll make that motion. I'll make the motion that the Police Department and the Human Rights Commission continue to develop a statement that the city can stand behind and specifically avoid any reference to anything from the UN.
That affirms our city's commitment to human rights, but also affirms our commitment to the Constitution. I think that's right here for the second.
Yeah. So in effect, tabling this, but asking them to continue.
And I will also say, the chief of police happens to be in Yellowstone tonight. That doesn't help the situation. He's the one that had the conversation, and I think that's unfortunate. And allowing him to be back in the, I just threw him under the bus, maybe, and I didn't mean to do that. I do think it's important that he's part of this conversation.
Yeah. I'll second that, y'all.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just, only thing I can say is, I just don't want people to get the wrong idea. I mean, what happened down in cities was a travesty. I mean, what he did was wrong. But I do believe that we have a chief of police here whose basic need to make sure that everybody in this town is treated equally and fairly, we're lucky to have him. And I don't think he would condone anything like this from any of the officers who work with him.
I think you're 100% right, Brett. And I think that his, this memo between the Human Rights says exactly that. And the fact that the Human Rights, I mean, I'm sorry, the fact that the UN is in there is going to get in the way of people agreeing on it. But I think that we can find a way to say the same thing, the values of the community. And if that's possible, we'll certainly support it.
Am I able to briefly comment?
Please do, Abby. Please do.
Yeah. So as conveniently, I just presented our 2020 plan. So you guys are aware we meet one hour a month for the Human Rights Commission. So the adoption, you know, the idea of this existing Declaration of Human Rights was to essentially avoid recreating the wheel and was not intended to indicate alliance with any particular organization or other. We hear those concerns. And overall, if this leads to continued and more thoughtful engagement between the Human Rights Commission and the Fergus Falls Police Department, well then that's something positive that has come out of the whole thing.
Thank you, Abby, for that, because I could not agree more.
Yeah, and I'll just thank the Human Rights Commission and the Police Department for their work on this. It's, of course, an extremely important topic that needs to continue to be addressed. And, yeah, I mean, I'm not necessarily married to the UN's concept of human rights. I just think that we can, we can put that in writing, and that matches with the values that we want to support. And it's a noble effort, so thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Ready to call the roll? Roll call, please.
Hicks.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Harper.
Yes.
Harmon.
Yes.
Roper.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Again, thanks, Abby, for your work. We look forward to bringing back the chief of police. All right. Item number four is a resolution directing staff to designate East Summit Avenue as Honeycut Memorial Drive. And I would call on Chris Shaw, Director of the Otter Tail County Historical Society. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
So the Fergus Falls Heritage Preservation Commission is offering a resolution to the city council to establish Prince Honeycut Memorial Drive on East Summit Avenue, I believe, to Burlington. So the resolution was discussed and agreed at the June 3 HPC meeting, and it is actually part of a years-long process to preserve the Honeycut House at 612 East Summit and also honor Prince Honeycut for his contributions to the city. And we are actually in process and discussions to have the Honeycut House nominated to the National Register of Historic Places. So born a slave in Tennessee, Prince Honeycut was around 10 years old when he began traveling with the Union Army as a mess boy for Captain James Compton. Compton and Prince established a real bond. And when Compton ended up moving to Fergus Falls in 1872, Honeycut came with him and thereby becoming the first African-American resident of the community. So Prince played really an active role in Fergus Falls. He was a volunteer fireman. He was a candidate for mayor. He owned a barber shop, business owner. And he was more than likely the first African-American baseball player in Minnesota. He helped organize the Fergus Falls North Stars Baseball Club, which later became known as the Musculers. Prince's dedication to helping the community was on full display when a large group of African-Americans arrived in Fergus Falls who were recruited by Fergus Falls civic leaders in 1898. Much of the responsibility to get this group settled felt to Prince. As the April 14, 1898 Fergus Falls Weekly Journal reported, "Prince Honeycut has a reputation for hospitality that is equaled by few. But when they shoved 85 people onto him Thursday with but a few hours' notice, it was crowding the mourners. However, Prince saw that all were provided for." So Prince constructed his house in 1885, living there until his death in 1924. It was remodeled, added on to in 1931. Prince Honeycut epitomizes the American story, a slave. He fought against tremendous odds to become an early pioneer and well-respected member of the community. So it is really time for Fergus Falls to recognize his contributions, unique contributions, by establishing Prince Honeycut Memorial Drive. And in this way, instead of renaming the street, people don't have to change their addresses or anything like that. It's like further Memorial Drive. So that's the resolution that the Fergus Falls Heritage Preservation Commission is bringing to you tonight.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks for the history.
I would offer...
Would you like to talk about it? Jim? Second, if I sky them. Questions for Chris? Thank you, Chris. Roll call, please.
Hicks.
I think he's, I think he's on.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number five is a Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee request to conduct a demonstration project on Union Avenue. Ryan Miller. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Your Honor. At last Thursday's meeting of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the construction project, the improvement project for Union Avenue between West Junius and West Lincoln was reviewed and presented by city engineer and Barry Glinky from Fulton and Mink. They provided an overview of the preferred alternatives for the improvement of those three blocks of Union Avenue. And at that meeting, the members of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee made a recommendation to, before finalizing those layouts, to do a demonstration project on those three blocks that would test out some of the alignments of the lanes and potential bike improvement facilities. So I don't know if you remember, a few years ago, there was a demonstration project over on East, East Washington Avenue for the Glacier Lodge Trail. A number of bollards were put out along that stretch between Casey's and Veterans Park. This would be similar to that. We would, the BPAC is requesting to put out some bollards and possibly some tape or striping options to test out this alignment and see how it works with bikes interacting in these three blocks, looking at the intersections. There was a number of questions about the alignment. And so they're requesting to do about a two-week demonstration project before finalizing the alignments.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions? The council? Can we do that, your motion?
I could ask a question.
Yes, please do. Well, let's get a motion and then we'll ask.
I'll play, I'll make the motion.
Got it. Motion's in. All right, go ahead, Scott.
What I remember from the last demonstration project, Ryan, is there was a number of white bollards.
What I remember from the last demonstration project, Ryan, is there was a number of white bollards that were placed to create the bike lane for the Central Lakes Trail deal. Is that the one you referred to?
Correct.
In this case, is the three-block area where these test lanes would be put in, will it affect the parking? Because where those, where that other one was, it didn't affect parking. It was along the side of the road, it didn't really affect any parking. I'm wondering how this might affect parking for the businesses in that area.
It would affect parking only by testing out the alignment of the proposed improvements. So there might be some changes to the on-street parking according to the layouts of the alter, or the preferred alternative for the improvement project. So there might be a few parking spaces that would be blocked off with bollards. You know, there is a, there is a plan for, I don't have a map up, but there's a plan for some bump outs on the corners between West Stanton and Union Avenue. So the corner of, you know, where the sidewalk intersects, it'd be an extended bump out there, that may eliminate some parking spots.
I think when we get into that next item, that map will be part of what we look at.
The final.
Shows those bump outs. But the thing is, as far as the bollards, what I remember was they would be fairly close together, and the ability to be able to get in through there to park, I don't know that that's going to be for practical. So I didn't, I just thought it might be good to try and address that more.
We don't have a final plan for exactly where every bollard will be located, we would just be using a two-week opportunity to test out.
And it's only two weeks.
Two weeks is what the recommendation from the BPAC was, yes.
All right.
Am I missing anything, Brian or Barry?
No, my name, let me speak over. Perhaps just give a little bit more background if I may, Your Honor.
Thank you.
We do have an illustration, if we can pull up on the map there. It's our latest version, version three. If you recall, we brought this project forward two, three months ago. Considered the main impetus was the improvement, pet improvements for Union Avenue. It incorporates, we first began with some layout, preliminary layouts, keep in mind everything preliminary right now at this time. We circulated through general staff, and then the next step, due to all that everything, we did a virtual, a virtual public hearing, meeting. Those results are all still data by the Fulton and Mink, who then retained for this project now. So since that, from the outcomes from some of the comments were received, was to engage and discuss the design, the current, most current design with the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, which we did, I did last Tuesday. They did, yes, make a motion to prepare this project, to do a demonstration project. I want to note, yes, it's a major corridor in town, but with this demonstration, here we go right now, here's the most current design, and maybe after I'm done talking, Barry, if you want to, just go over some lightweight features. This is preliminary at this time, but yes, there will be some lane reductions. We do have to concentrate to on the free right, locate it at Lincoln and Union Avenue, it'd be more of a merge condition. So yes, with this demonstration project, we will have to do some enhanced, enhanced warnings for, it'll be changing driver behavior over through this corridor. So at two weeks, end of the day, like I said, I do, do prefer like doing this demonstration project, however, it is a tight schedule, so we're going to do our best. If we can do this demonstration project in an orderly way, and get good feedback and enter a final design, that we could possibly do it, construct it this year. There's still a lot of things that have to happen, such as state aid project, state reviews, and other comments going through the bidding process. So I don't know, Barry, if you wouldn't mind, just giving us a quick, right, just give you a quick overview of what this project is right now.
Sure. Brian did a great good job. He looked to the, to the free right here off of Lincoln, getting on to Union here, about removing that and creating a merge condition there. So those are some of the things that we'd be looking at doing for the temporary traffic control, as well to move that traffic to the east and not have two lanes there in that block, then extending through Union, creating these bump outs here for a shorter pedestrian crossing on Union and Stanton there, and then developing bike lanes essentially in the park, in the outside lanes over the bridge there. And then also extending the bike lanes through the Washington Avenue intersection, you can see it here, then that'll extend down to the next block as well. But those are the improvements that we would be looking at, at doing some temporary controls on to set up. The one change that we did, we're moving around, the one change we did discuss, Thursday's meeting was, was adjusting where maybe that crossing is on Stanton there, north and south, to, to push that sidewalk crossing further towards Union Avenue, just for sight distance, and with that incline on Stanton there, just so people can make that movement.
Say that again, Barry, further, the crosswalk, I see the crosswalk, you're going to push it further towards, I got it, that one.
I won't talk when I'm over there. And then this also corresponds with the layout for the downtown project as well, with the entrances into there. Obviously, those will, that area won't be able to be temporarily done, because there is an entrance there. If we take that away, we'll take away that entrance that part. So it's basically the west side, and that's kind of where those improvements, or temporary conditions would have to be as well.
So if I may, back to Mr. Councilmember Kwame's question regarding the parking one. Yes, some of the proposed renderings included adding additional bump outs for North Bond Union on the west side. By doing those, we would be essentially losing a stall or two. So a project similar as this, we're taking into account not only the pedestrian improvements, tractor-trailer combination, turn lane movements that we also take into account, and business parking as well. Those are all the combinations that we're trying to bring together with this. So there's, there's some give and take to be at this point where we're at, showing before you right now.
Yeah, question, or what?
I maybe just have a comment too to add, and from what I'm understanding, this is probably going to be a good thing, that heading eastbound on that triangle going on to Union, that two-lane with the yield right now, I've personally been in a couple times heading south on Union, and a car coming around that curve driving 2530, even though there's a yield. As a matter of fact, last week, I don't, if there was a car in uncoming traffic where I couldn't serve, I would have got broadside it. So it's kind of a scary corner, and so I think by what you're doing, they'd have to almost stop to go into a single lane, which would help remedy some of it. So I mean, I, it was a close call. If I wouldn't have been able to go into uncoming traffic at 8:00 in the morning, I would have gotten nailed. And that happened, that's happened a couple times in the last month. So I think if you can slow traffic around that point, that'd be good.
What is the physical barrier that green there that reduces the two lanes? And the reason I ask is because there's like a flower pot that weighs about two tons down there now.
It's there for a reason.
Taken out by a semi, so whatever that is, I hope it's not a bike rack or something. Three tons fall at all times.
The green refers to the area that we can do stuff with, whether that's some landscape enhancements or anything like that. That's, green is kind of the go area where we can do something with, but.
It's not encouraged picnicking in there.
In light of those comments, I think, I mean, there'll be some time for adjustment, but if you do something, landscape, it's more than likely to get wrecked, and so, because that area's been problematic for semis and such, so maybe keep that in mind. I know in one original rendering, it was bumped out for picnic tables and such and things to be on the road, but that wouldn't be a good spot to have that. And I don't know if we can, you know, we implemented down on Summit and Freyberg stop signs, those flashing stop signs, I think that's really been pretty good for, for people to stop. I don't know if you can do that on a yield sign to kind of, you know, magnify the fact that, hey, you need to slow down, you're coming into, you know, an uncoming.
Yeah, we'll have to do some of that stuff when we do that traffic control change, because right now, it is, it isn't even a yield condition right now.
Right.
You just, you just make the right, and you pull into that near lane, and you go, and we're going to make it into a yield condition.
You're going too fast, you just go home.
Just go.
They don't go.
You just drift a little bit.
They don't go into the right lane, though.
They go right to the left.
Yeah.
Could we get quotes on a four-ton statue of Mayor Shire in that corner?
One, in all seriousness, the, the, thank you for that. On Stanton as well, speaking of those flashing, the one, like when you have that crosswalk that you moved further down to Stanton, the, there's a serious issue there of people walking, pedestrians walking across the bridge, walking north. The people that are coming up to that stop sign currently, all they're doing is looking to make sure there's not a car coming from the left, they do not look for any pedestrian traffic. And I've seen kids, I've seen a number of people, you know, it, that gets to be an area where they're not looking for pedestrians. So I think anything we could do to just make sure that there's a, bringing attention to the fact that there's pedestrians crossing there would be a good thing.
Bicycles also coming up there. I've, I've almost hit.
Part of that history, the railing there really cuts down on visibility.
And the fact that there's two lanes.
You pull up so you can see.
As long as, as long as there's not someone in the lane, I feel like they can just go up there, and it does create a real hazard for pedestrians.
Would the bump outs there help with that?
Yeah, bump outs.
Yeah.
Railing is right here right now, and we're going to move that traffic forward, just going to take that obstruction out of there. And everything is getting tighter.
Yeah.
So it's going to slow people down, and people are going to move as fast through that area.
It's getting tighter, now increases visibility of biking pedestrians, but keep in mind, too, you're lowering that exposure time for heads, bikes crossing that road, those are one of the two things trying to accomplish. It's a considerably wide road, I can't recall, why would we be reducing that?
And just the fact that you have the east-west crossing on this, it's going to just make people think that there's pedestrians in that area, because like currently, you have seven lanes across there, traffic going both ways, so anyway, yeah, just slowing it down. So anyway, I've got enough amateur engineering for you.
We definitely appreciate the comments, like, you know, everything's preliminary at this time, so it's a demonstration. I did request from the BPAC, they, they do the public outreach and education with this demonstration project. We will provide some of the markings in the field, but do this demonstration project, and then we can go from there.
Thank you, Ryan, thank you, Ryan, thank you, Barry. Yes, Scott, go ahead.
There were several comments made about specific concern areas, I guess the one I would ask that you take a look at, I'm sure it'll come up, is where Washington Avenue turns north onto Union. Sometimes the traffic, even as it is now, can back up there, and I think it might be helpful to have a right turn lane as well as a left turn lane where Washington hits Union.
Yeah.
So maybe that north bump out on Washington is going to be too tight to allow for two lanes there, and that might be something that you'll find in your study, whether or not the traffic will be backed up there.
Right now, we have that lane at 20 feet wide, so there is enough room.
Is that enough for two lanes?
For a left and a right.
Okay.
It's more of a shared lane concept versus designated for this particular.
If they get over where they belong, there's enough.
That, exactly.
We also created that shared lane for the right turn, North Bond right turn onto West Lincoln, to allow for a commercial turning movement in there, to get them over to the left so they can actually make that right without taking out a large statue on the corner.
All right. Good one to end on.
Those two bump outs that are there, I can't see them quite clearly. You got the alley between Ben's Place and the building next door, and you have the exit coming out for the market parking lot there. Are those going to be blocked, and they're going to have to come in through the side, or?
No.
Because it just kind of seems it'd be kind of tight, you come out of those, you, you know, unless you have a wide apron that you're going to kind of end up getting pretty close to uncoming traffic coming out of those.
Technically, you shouldn't be coming out of the market, right, from that spot, technically?
Well, you shouldn't, but they will.
Can you use those things they put in rental car lots, with the spikes that pop?
Well, hey, I was coming down, and I had somebody almost go head-on with me going into that alley between Ben's Place, so.
I just wanted to add also, the Chair of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee is watching remotely, and wanted to comment for the record that they do also advocate the bike lanes extending north along Union Avenue, and would like to include that in our trial test as well, that the bike lanes continue north of Stanton up to West Lincoln. So I wanted to add that comment as well.
Thanks. So.
Do we need a motion?
We have a motion on the floor. Scott offered it, and I don't remember who seconded it, but he timed it, yeah. So we have a motion on the floor, allowing, accepting this request, conducting demonstration.
Agreed, modified to allow that Stanton to Lincoln? Or is that, can that be in the motion?
It's not part of the proposal, it's presented.
What? What he just said?
Scott, would you like to amend your motion to him? He's just asking about extending the bike lanes north of Stanton Avenue up to West Lincoln Avenue, at the request of the Chair of the Bike and Pedestrian Committee. Is that something we'd like to consider adding to your motion?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Just for the test.
Just for the test, and we get data on it, right? That's the whole point?
Yep.
Okay, that's good. We have a motion, amended motion on the floor. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For the same sign, that motion, okay. Thank you, Ryan, thank you, Ryan, and thank you, Barry. Let's see, there are no staff from, reports from staff, administrative officers, under old and untended business, we have an update on the Downtown Riverfront project, and I will call on the city administrator, Andrew Brezner. Hello, Andrew.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, members. I'm going to pass this off real quick, because I have a few pages. First, the, as you can see on the screen here, and as you all know, we've been talking about this project for several years now, four years, as the mayor's indicating, dating back to a community-wide master planning effort that we did, which engaged a lot of folks. So pleased to have an update on this tonight. There's not any action I'm necessarily looking for when I'm all said and done, but I would like to hear some questions and feedback from you if, if appropriate, as we go through this. So as you'll recall, we've presented this several times with two blocks here behind City Hall across the river, the west block concept, which has included a river market structure, as well as the overlooks and riverfront balcony, and then the east block, which has included an amphitheater along the river, including a water feature splash pad, and then also a restroom facility with adequate storage for the amphitheater. So you've all seen this, we've talked about it lots of times, and a lot of work has been done over the last few months. I should just quickly point out, Barry Glinky, who just spoke at length about the Union Avenue project, is our consultant on this project as well, and a lot of staff time has gone into this, so just want to say thank you to Brian, Bill, Guy, everybody who's worked on this over the last few months, because there's been a lot of, a lot of effort to get to this point here tonight. But as you all know, the economic uncertainty surrounding the COVID-19 crisis has impacted just about everybody in the community in one way or another, certainly more so some than others, and also the unpredictability of state bonding. You're all aware that the legislature packed up, ended their session, and didn't pass a bonding bill or very many bills for that matter. They are now back in special session, that started last Friday, and we're hoping that a bonding bill comes forward, but as you all know, this project is really built on that state bonding piece, so that unpredictability has raised a lot of concerns and questions as it relates to this project for staff. So we've really put our, put our heads together to come up with a revised, reduced scoped project that we want to present to the council this evening, that I think is more in line with the goals of the council as it relates to now these economic uncertain times, and ensuring that the local share that goes into this project is minimized as much as we possibly can. So with that being said, staff is recommending, there's a new rendering that Claire's going to put up on the screen, staff is recommending that the amphitheater portion of this project be removed, as you can see in this new drawing on the east block, there's no longer an amphitheater present. We're also recommending that the restrooms on the east block with amphitheater storage are removed, and then also an elevated walkway to Mill Street on that block. So as it sits with the proposed reduced scope on the east block, you're looking at a water feature splash pad. At the end of the presentation, I'll show more visuals of that, I think you guys will really be impressed with what that looks like, but really hones in on that as the defining feature of the east block while removing that amphitheater structure. On the west block, the market structure has, and again, I'll show you a picture of this at the end, been designed with garage doors and other elements that would make it a three-seasoned feature. We're proposing that we bid those things as alternates, so they could be. that we bid those things as alternates. So they could be included if pricing is favorable, but as we build this financing back, we want to make sure we have the flexibility to really minimize the cost, especially to the local taxpayers, as we do that. So I presented in the, in the materials before you a couple different scenarios with numbers as it relates to those two things. One of the scenarios has a prefabricated bridge, as contemplated within our previous LCCMR request. The other scenario is with the historic Kern Bridge that we talked about back in March. As you'll see, Barry did a really good job of putting this together. If you flip it to the back page of both of those scenarios, you'll see the proposed cost as well as what the proposed revenues are. And under the scenario with the prefabricated bridge, it's about a $4.22 million project with the city's contribution being $220,000. So really a minimal amount that the local taxpayers would be on the hook for if, if that were to happen. In the Kern Bridge scenario, that bumps the total project cost up to $7.5 million, and the city contribution under that scenario would be $489,850. I do want to add a note of caution to those numbers. These are estimates on the Kern Bridge based on what we know today, but we don't know everything. I'll say that. The RFP for the Kern Bridge was supposed to be let back in March, I believe, and it still has not been let. So we don't know exactly what we're working with on that, which hasn't allowed us to get really pristine numbers. So I would ask you to hold judgment on that scenario tonight because these are probably less than complete numbers because we don't have that entire picture. So with that being said, I wanted to touch base, as you all recall, our request to the state bonding committee was a $2.65 million request. That was half the previous project that I showed at the onset here, half of that total cost. We are in the House version of the bonding bill for $1,646,000. Again, we requested 2.65 million, so about a million dollars under what we requested. It's very competitive this year. There's a lot of needs across the state, and that bill has really grown. We were not in the Senate version that was released during the session, but rest assured, state bonding has to originate in the House. So usually the House version of the bill carries a little more weight, especially when they get into conference committee to make up the differences or sort through the differences. So that is obviously a determining factor in needing to resize and re-scope this thing because we can expect that the state share is going to be reduced by about a million dollars should we receive what's in the bonding bill today and should a bonding bill be passed. So to further touch on some of our funding sources, after conversations with private donors and the Vaden Trust, we're expecting to be able to raise a million dollars in private funds for this project, along with those, that million dollar donation, worth of donations. Noon Rotary has contemplated $80,000 towards the splash pad. Sunrise Rotary has committed $50,000 towards the river market structure on the west block. We continue to seek clarity from LCCMR. As you recall, we received a $600,000 grant. That did not require any local match, but the scope of that fund was different than what we're proposing today. So we're trying to get the answers we need to ensure that that money can still be used within this project. And then I just wanted to touch base, last time we presented this, there was some talk about how the Vaden Trust may have been impacted by the pandemic like everyone else. I wanted to, or I'm pleased to report back that there were direct conversations at the end of last week with the Vaden Trust. They have indicated their continued support for this project and understood the need for a reduced scope. The makeup of the trustees is going to be shifting slightly, so they're asking to see more information related to these other commitments I just talked about, as well as getting a better understanding of where the state bonding bill is before making a final commitment. But the conversation was very productive and positive, and of course, before this project could succeed, we need all of those final commitments. So maybe, Mayor, do you want to add anything about the Vaden Trust, or does that pretty much sum up the?
Thank you, summed it up well. They're, they were disappointed, but they understood the need to downsize this in the situation. And again, because of the, some changes in the trust, they, they wanted to reiterate their support. However, before making a final commitment, they want to make sure, as they have all along, that this is a project that has multiple funding sources coming together for a project that's impactful and meaningful. So, yeah, I think.
And I should be clear for folks who may not recall, the Vaden Trust originally pledged $700,000 in relation to the amphitheater project, which is why we're continuing these conversations and asking for their continued support and commitment as it relates to the project, because obviously that component is, is proposed to be removed from the project. So very important to note that distinction. The city is anticipating an award of $100,000 National Endowment for the Arts grant, which is half of what the grant application was submitted as we asked for, $200,000 on a $400,000 project. With that $100,000 grant, there's currently a four-to-one match requirement, meaning a $400,000 project is necessary to receive the $100,000 grant. Staff, as we talk through this and look at all the different scenarios, we're suggesting that we request to the NEA to cut that budget in half or even further, depending on how things play out here. But that would be an equal match, a one-to-one, where the city would be responsible for $100,000 and the NEA would grant $100,000 to the city. In the application to the National Endowment for the Arts, it's contemplated that the Public Arts Commission would work to secure match, matching funding for the projects, and I would hope that we could lean on them to continue to work or begin work on that to help us decide what size of scope that particular NEA grant project is a part of. I will say those components are not within this project as presented today, not even that statue of Mayor Shire made the cut here. And these numbers do not reflect that as a revenue source or as a cost. So from a timing perspective, of course, everything is tied to the bonding bill with such a large and significant gift, and there's so much uncertainty around that. As I mentioned, they're in special session now, so the hope is that there's something that can be approved sooner than later. But there are very pressing issues that the legislature is taking up. It relates to some recent events that may need to be addressed prior to bonding. Without securing bonding or the Vaden support or the green light from LCCMR, this project will be difficult to move forward on. So obviously, there's still a lot of moving parts, but I'm confident with the staff that we have working on this and the relationships that we've formed with these entities, there is a way to resolve these things and to get where we need to get so this can move forward. If, if and when bonding is secured, we're proposing that the west block would be completed first, which is the market structure near Union Avenue. We just talked at length about Union Avenue, which the hope is that we can get that complete this year after that demonstration project, which will tie perfectly into this project. And then east block would follow, and then both the east and west parking lots themselves would be improved at the completion of the riverfront improvements. As far as the Kern Bridge goes, I mentioned the council previously authorized staff to submit our letter of intent for the bridge. That RFP process, we're hoping starts within the next few weeks. It's anticipated, I believe, for June 26th. Originally, it was a MINDOT solicitation, and the State Historic Preservation Office has become more involved in that, which has added a little bit of time as they sort through what that's going to look like and how that'll play out. But once the RFP is released and we understand additional information requirements and get a better understanding of costs, then we will be looking for this council to make decisions as it relates to how to proceed with that historic bridge or which direction we want to go. So not looking for anything necessarily tonight, but just wanted you to know there are going to be some decisions on our forthcoming that have to be made once more and information is understood. So that's the, that's the information. I would like to show the pictures of both the splash pad as well as the market structure, unless there's questions first before we go through that.
No, I just would like to say, I know how much work the staff has done. This project has continually changed and moved in light of the current situations. I just really applaud Bill, Andrew, Brian, the very free work that you've done. To put the, you know, this is, this is still an impactful, meaningful project we've been working on for four years that minimizes, I can't stress enough how it minimizes the local contribution to, by my, by my math, it's about 5% right now that we're looking at on the one project, on the one scenario, and 6% on the other. So in these challenging times, the fact that we can invest significant monies into our community, that means includes jobs and construction dollars in this community, and do so at a minimal cost to local taxpayers with a major impact to the downtown businesses, I think is a, is a real winner. And I applaud the efforts that you guys have done to find this, what I think is a reasonable compromise, but still toward a very impactful project. So I applaud the work you've done. Scott?
I'd reiterate, just to say that we get a big bang for our buck on this case. And I think that's good. The one question I had was, I thought our original west, let's see, the block that has the farmer's market on it, that's the west, right? I don't, did that have bathrooms in it from the beginning, and it still does, or did those get added when we took them from the amphitheater side?
Yeah, both. No, it's got back and forth. We've talked about it. Barry can attest probably 100 times. And we got a lot of feedback from the farmer's market folks and other users, literally 100 times. I'm not kidding. Originally, it did not include bathrooms. Then we said, yes, this is probably a good idea. As we were looking at scoping and then reduce or removing the restrooms on the east block, it became imperative that they were in that west block. And they do make a lot of sense being in the west block. It really is good for the users of that facility and falls in line with the feedback that we received throughout the design process. Do you want to add anything to that or?
I answered my question.
Dig it to the hole. Go through one more time. We were always going to bid it as an alternate, the bathrooms, to see what we could have there, what that dollar value is going to be. As we did what Andrew said, remove that other set, it made more sense. We have storage here. We have a spot for tables, some lens, equipment, hot water heaters, that kind of stuff.
It's a sign.
It's a sign, actually, just to. But you can, you can see in here the garage doors we have in there, also those are the infrared heaters up there for the third, third season effect. And they're, those are the alternates that we have in the bid right now to, to eliminate those things if it's cost prohibitive at this time. We have the design, the cost, I think, a bit, it's already in there, so.
And I think you mentioned, Andrew, but just to reiterate too, like right now, we're dependent upon state bonding, obviously. If the state legislature were to pass something soon, they're in session right now. If they were, it's still possible to bid this and, and, and do construction this year possibly, right? On portions of it. But, but most likely it's going to be, if it's later in the summer, later in the fall, it's going to be next year construction season. Would that be realistic?
The critical component is the LCCMR funding. If we can't get that extended, that has to be extended by this time next year. So that concrete bike path, it's got to, we've got to spend some dollars on. So that'll be the first focal port, focal point of what we want to get constructed, get some stuff done this year.
And I'll just, yeah, encourage people to, you know, to, to think about how pleasant it's going to be to have dinner downtown and then swing through Uncle Eddie's for a cone or whatnot and, and go and spend some time at our, on our beautiful new riverfront and the kind of benefits that's going to bring to the city with the other amenities that we already have, is in terms of attracting people and bringing people downtown to, to hang out and to spend money, and that's going to spur development of locally-owned businesses and other kinds of shoppings. And I think we should be very excited about it.
Yeah. And just to, I also just make up the point, I applaud the efforts to make sure that the splash pad was able to maintain, to stay in the project as something for kids and, and parents of those kids. I mean, I think that's, especially in light of the fact that the state legislature put in moratorium on sales tax referendum. So the discussions, our community discussions around the pool is going to have to wait. But in the meantime, there's still something that takes the children into account in the splash pad. I know that a lot of people are excited about that feature, so I'm just pleased that it was able to remain in the project. Justin, you had some?
I'm just curious. I guess I, I totally agree with everything that's been said. I just kind of saddened to see the, the other part of the component of the project gone away. And I guess my question is, is that something, are we going to lose sight of that? We're not going to look at doing that. I mean, because I look at construction and we have a nice new parking lot and everything. I mean, obviously, it wouldn't lead for new development on that site, I would imagine, after you've just spent millions of dollars in getting it prepared. So I just, I've had, you know, through the whole process, there's been a lot of good feedback regarding having the amphitheater there as well. I think in light of everything I understand, but disappointed as well as the Vaden Trust to see that potentially go away. So.
So I would, I would point to the words at the bottom of this revised drawing, remove the restroom, but maybe added in the future, remove amphitheater, maybe added in the future. So it is contemplated that, you know, if, if the stars align down the road, there's certainly the space and the ability to work that into the design. Internally, we've talked a little bit about portable type stage where you could still use the natural area. You wouldn't have the defined seating of an amphitheater, but there certainly could be opportunities for programming along the riverfront, which should be a neat opportunity. And then, yeah, so if the desire remains down the road, certainly there's, there's opportunities to do that. It does require some costly sheet piling type work along the riverfront. I'm an amateur engineer as well, but I know enough to know that that's expensive. So.
Yeah, we had almost a million dollars for the sheet piling that was going to be on the river. So that made it an easy target to cut numbers off real quick to do it.
You have a natural amphitheater right there.
We basically just cut it out.
Right.
So we could go back and put it back in. It's going to be more difficult.
I was thinking, construction, honestly, on a brand new site, doesn't like the ideal bringing the equipment you're going to need to. So, I mean, that's okay. I get it. It's just, you know.
So it's hard for us to cut it out too.
Any other questions?
The only, I just want to reiterate to your, your great question, but you know, again, our motivation for this, for this reduced scope or these changes really boils down to the fact that we want to reduce the impact to our local taxpayers. That was the goal all along, but even more prevalent with the uncertainty related to COVID-19. And then the fact that we didn't receive the level of support from the state that we were hoping for. I mean, it is what it is, and it necessitated the need for, for these changes. But again, the motivation, the motivation behind these decisions is the local taxpayers and minimizing this share. That's the feedback we've received, heard it loud and clear. And that was a good, I think, compromise to be able to accomplish that goal, but also to still have a pretty robust project that meets the needs of all ages of the community, whether it be kids in the splash pad or folks coming to enjoy the farmer's market or other areas along.
All right. Thank you. And thank you, Barry, Brian, Bill, thanks for your work on this again. With that, there is no new business this evening, and I do not have any announcements this evening. So if there's nothing to come before the come, so we are adjourned.